Good evening, everyone. We are here for our St. Lucy County regular meeting, October the 11th, 2022, and we are now calling our meeting to order. We are asking you to please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Kids That Hope Treasure Hunters Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great goal of the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with no religion or justice for all.
Well, I want to clap just for you guys already, and you haven't even started performing yet, right? Okay, now, we're going to say the Treasure Hunters Pledge to you because we are treasure hunters, okay? So as an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you so much. You may be seated, audience. And we are going to get ready for a special presentation. We welcome Dr. John Leslie, the principal, the fine principal, of the Village, let me say it right, Village Green Environment Studies School Student Performance tonight. And also, we welcome the teacher. Thank you for being such a great educator, Ms. Cynthia Reynolds. At this time, our students will do a special presentation.
We are singing a selection from our Latin school called Number Five. At this, in this class, we're doing music, but we're also doing math, math and music, music and math. So we're taking two songs, one's called Penny in My Pocket. Now, I'm not trying to have a political stance on my salary, and then we have one that's called. Ready? Are we ready, kids?
Yeah!
You ready?
There's a penny in my pocket, my pocket, my pocket. There's a penny in my pocket, it's worth a single cent. My penny is equal or niggles, a nickel, a nickel. My penny is equal or niggles, it's worth a whole my cents. There's a penny in my pocket, my pocket, my pocket. There's a penny in my pocket, it's worth a single cent. My penny is equal or a dime, one dime. A nickel is equal one dime, it's worth a whole ten cents. There's a penny in my pocket, my pocket, my pocket. There's a penny in my pocket, it's worth a single cent. Now, my penny is equal a quarter, a quarter, a quarter. Because price is equal a quarter, what number of niggles will do? There's a penny in my pocket, my pocket, my pocket. There's a penny in my pocket, it's worth a single cent. Four quarters equal a dollar, a dollar, a dollar. Four quarters equal a dollar, how many pennies will do? There's a penny in my pocket, my pocket, my pocket. There's a penny in my pocket, it's worth a single cent. It's worth a single cent. Giddy! (applause) Sixty seconds in a minute, sixty minutes in an hour, and twenty-four hours in a day. Hooray! Sixty seconds in a minute, sixty minutes in an hour, and twenty-four hours in a day. Hooray! How many days in a week? Seven. How many things in a year? Fifty-two. You can count as little as anybody, and I can count on you. Sixty seconds in a minute, sixty minutes in an hour, and twenty-four hours in a day. Hooray! Sixty seconds in a minute, sixty minutes in an hour, and twenty-four hours in a day. Hooray! How many days in a week? Well, thirty days back in December, April, June, and November, August, September, thirty-one, February. How many days in a year? Twelve. You have time as hard as can be, so come and spend some time with me. Sixty seconds in a minute, sixty minutes in an hour, and twenty-four hours in a day. Hooray! Sixty seconds in a minute, sixty minutes in an hour, and twenty-four hours in a day. Hooray! Sixty seconds in a minute, sixty minutes in an hour, and twenty-four hours in a day. Hooray! Sixty seconds in a minute, sixty minutes in an hour, and twenty-four hours in a day. Hooray!
We want to welcome all the parents that came to support your children today. Would you please stand and let us give you an applause for coming this evening? And thank you, young people. You did an excellent job today. Again, thank you, Ms. Reynolds and Dr. Leslie. At this time, we are going to prepare to turn the special order of business over to Dr. Prince.
I'll introduce our communications chief, Ms. Lydia Martin. Turn the program over to her.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Prince. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Kevin Perry, Assistant to the Superintendent, who will introduce our special guest speaker.
Madam Chair, School Board Member Superintendent Prince, Dr. Alvin Miller is a native of Fort Pierce, Florida, and a graduate of Fort Pierce Central High School. As a standout member of the Cobra football team, he was selected as an All-State Football Player. In addiction, he has been inducted into the St. Lucy County Sports Hall of Fame. Dr. Miller was also a walk-on at Eastern Kentucky University for their football team and quickly earned a scholarship. In doing so, he began his journey where he ened his cleats into the history of a winning legacy and football dynasty at Eastern Kentucky. Upon graduating from Eastern, he was commissioned as a second lieutenant in the United States Army, where he retired at the rank of Colonel after 34-plus years. He taught at Fort Pierce Central High, wrote several books, including The Horse, earned a doctorate of Ministry from Oral Roberts University, and is currently the pastor of St. John Missionary Baptist Church in Clarksville, Tennessee. He's here because of a dynamic teacher that helped him along the way. I'll let him tell the rest of that. Ms. Rita Johnson, who many of us know, I think she is also here with us tonight. Please help me welcome one of St. Lucy Public Schools' favorite sons, Dr. Alvin Miller.[534.38][534.38](applause)
Thank you very much, Dr. Perry.
Welcome, Dr. Mills.
Madam Chair, Dr. Mills, I bless you, to Dr. Prince and to the board. I just want to say that I am grateful for this opportunity to stand before you tonight. The Horse: Last Chance is the story about a very wayward and very angry young man who did not go to any preschool, I mean, pre-k schooling or kindergarten. It's about a young man who grew up in the project, was a migrant worker. It's about a young man who really was angry at the world until he met his seventh-grade teacher, who changed his life. Mrs. Johnson, I was headed to either Marianna, Florida, to the boys' school, by Judge Jack Rogers, who told me that I was the worst kid in the county school system, and therefore he expelled me from school in the second grade. Now, I was socially promoted. I failed the first grade. I was socially promoted to the second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade. And it was in seventh grade that I met Mrs. Rita Johnson. Mrs. Johnson changed my life. Mrs. Johnson turned my life. She allowed me, she taught me how to dream. Mrs. Johnson was the educator that proved herself to me, and so she's all in the book simply because of the things that she did for me. Now, notice this, I said I was socially promoted to all of these grades, and I failed the first grade, but somehow, somehow, I never went to the eighth grade. I went to the, from the seventh to the ninth grade and was on the honor roll all the way through high school. So I just want to thank you for planting the seed in my life, and so I'm here today. Me and my wife, we're going to plant a seed, as I told the football team at Fort Pierce Central that we would give $1,200 to them, $1,000 to C.A. Moore, and another $1,000, $200 to Damacotta Miller School, where it all happened. And so I'd like Ms. Johnson to come and just say something briefly, and I'm finished. I just need to know who to give the check to, who to get the money order to.[726.44][726.44](laughter) All right? Thank you.[729.13][729.13](applause) And also, also, as Ms. Johnson is coming, I have a book for each one of you all, autographed book, in the Horse: Last Chance bag here. So, Mrs. Johnson.
Thank you, Alvin.
Now, that's one book I can't wait to read. Ms. Johnson.
Board members, chairperson, everything he said was true, but I'm not going to read this to you because you can purchase it. I took a few notes, okay?
Okay.
You're going to stand by me?
Yes.
No, you can stand up here, stand up here, stand up here.
And we're going to take photos too, so stay, stay up there.
Face the judge. Alvin Miller's life reflects the worst and the best life has to offer. His mom and his maternal grandmother were his mentors until he stopped adhering to their rules. His mom, Elizabeth Miller, reared ten children as a single mom. During Alvin's early years in school, he only attended school one semester in second grade and one semester in first grade. Eventually, he became the juvenile, a juvenile delinquent. His book, The Horse: Last Chance, reflects every aspect of his life, both good and bad. Many of your current students, especially your middle and high school students, could learn a lot from this book. Today, Alvin Miller epitomizes the positive aspect of life. He's always helping people, always doing things for everyone, both he and his wife, who is always by his side. Both he and his lovely wife, Dominique, continue to mentor young adults. I took the time to write this because I can get very emotional. I met Alvin when I was 23, I was his seventh-grade teacher, and I'm 75 now, and he is 60-plus now. We have a very, very strong bond. It wasn't easy at first, but I have to give credit to my deceased husband, Jimmy Johnson. He took Alvin under his wing also. He took Alvin to professional football games, baseball games, baseball runs in the Johnson He took him everywhere. We had lots of fun traveling together. I'm from New Orleans originally, and Alvin has been to New Orleans. We wanted him to go to Southern University, which is my alma mater in Baton Rouge, up the river from LSU, but instead, he went to Eastern Kentucky University. And of course, you're going to have to read the book because this young man has achieved so many accolades that it's very difficult to stand up here and talk to you about it without crying. He played in high school, no, in ninth grade. He ran six touchdowns against Vero Beach High School as a ninth-grade student, and my husband, who was assistant principal at Vero High School, tried to tell the coach, "Watch out for number 44. Be careful. You know, he may be short." And that particular day, he ran six touchdowns against him. His head coach, Coach Kidd, at Eastern Kentucky University, told me that they had to rewrite the playbook. Now, I don't know anything about football. I know how to look at it, okay? But some of you, men and women, can relate to this. He said that Alvin was not the fastest person he had out there, but he could get off that, get away with the ball in a split second, and nobody could catch him. One of the most enlightening things that happened in his life is that he did the invocation for President Obama when he visited Fort Campbell. And for those of you who've been in the armed services, you know that Fort Campbell is where nothing but the best is there. They are responsible for the killing of...
Osama bin Laden.
Osama bin Laden and other people that were trying to destroy the world. Alvin was one of the chaplains there. This young man has achieved so much until, sometimes I have to pinch myself and ask, "Am I really a part of this?" And then, when I see him, or when he calls me every day, I call him every day, I say, "Yes, this is what it's all about." I'm not the only teacher who has shared my life with students. Back in the day, it always happened. Before I could even punish Alvin for something he did wrong, I would have to get to know the family, and that's what we did back then. I know his mom, his, his mom will tell people, people, excuse me, even today, that Ms. Johnson is Alvin's mother. She's really his mother. But on behalf of teachers, teachers should always get what they want. Nobody paid me to say this, but I put 37 years into the school system. I served as a teacher, counselor, dean, assistant principal, and then principal. I helped establish two alternative schools in St. Lucy County. The first one was Woodlands Academy, and the second one was Delaware Avenue School, the old school board office. I've seen a lot, and a lot of kids have been impressive, but I want you to know that this young man is the best product that went through this school system. Proud of you, love you.
Love you too.
Thank you for letting me share his life with you.
Madam Chair, at this time, I'd like to invite Troy Church, Deputy Chief Safety and Security, to the podium to share the Safe Schools Week proclamation.
Good evening, Chairman, Dr. Mills, Board, Dr. Prince. I'm honored to represent the Safety and Security Department in this proclamation for Safe Schools Week, October 16th through the 22nd of 2022. Whereas the School Board of St. Lucy County recognizes the obligation of schools to make substantial contributions to the future of St. Lucy County and to the United States of America, and to the development of our nation's young people as knowledgeable, responsible, and productive citizens, and whereas excellence in education is dependent on safe, secure, peaceful, and predictable school settings, and whereas the safety and well-being of many students, teachers, and school staff may be unnecessarily jeopardized by crime and violence, such as substance abuse, gangs, bullying, poor discipline, vandalism, and absenteeism in our schools, and whereas it is the responsibility of all citizens to take part in enhancing the learning experiences of young people by helping to ensure fair and effective discipline, promoting good citizenship, and in general, recognizing that all citizens should strive to make all schools safe and secure. And whereas all leaders, especially those in education, law enforcement, the state of Florida, county of St. Lucy, Florida Department of Education, Office of Safe Schools, government and business, should eagerly collaborate with each other and the National School Safety Center, a partnership with the U.S. Department of Justice and U.S. Department of Education, to focus public attention on school safety and identify, develop, and promote innovative answers to these critical issues. And whereas recognizing, along with numerous schools and school districts throughout the state, region, and country, that there are those with innovative answers to be evaluated and implemented, and whereas the observance of America's Safe Schools Week will substantially promote efforts to provide a positive and safe learning climate in all states, counties, and school districts. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucy County does hereby proclaim the week of October 16th through 22nd, 2022, as America's Safe Schools Weeks in St. Lucy Public Schools, here on the 11th day of October, 2022.[1505.33][1505.33](inaudible) Thank you so much.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite Marci Lucky, Director of Exceptional Student Education, to the podium, and she will read a proclamation recognizing Disability History and Awareness Weeks.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. I am so very happy to be here representing the Exceptional Student Education Department and Student Services, One Division, One Team. I'd like to read for you today our proclamation, Disability History and Awareness Weeks. Whereas the 2008 Florida Legislature declared the first two weeks of October to be observed in public schools K through 12 as Disability History and Awareness Weeks, and whereas the goals of Disability History and Awareness instruction includes recognition of the ability of all students, and whereas recognition results in the better understanding of individuals with disabilities in society, especially youth in our schools. Whereas encouraging individuals with disabilities to build upon their strengths, which result in more individuals gaining pride in their abilities, obtaining post-secondary education, entering the workforce, and contributing to their communities, and whereas the district reaffirms a commitment to the full inclusion of and equal opportunities for all individuals with disabilities. And whereas celebrating Disability History and Awareness Weeks allows us to appreciate the accomplishments of students with disabilities, their parents, or guardians, teachers, and staff in St. Lucy County public schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucy County, Florida, does hereby proclaim October 1st through 15th, 2022, as Disability History and Awareness Weeks
At this time, we're going to move forward with our star recognitions. First, we have Maciel Marcano and Larry Beckham, if you could come forward. Both of these amazing individuals were nominated by Principal Brad Layman from Southern Oaks Middle School, and he wanted to recognize Larry and Maciel for the recent and ongoing support of their school. Both Larry and Maciel assisted their school maintenance department with daily cleaning as a result of staffing issues. Due to their help, the teachers and staff report that the building continues to remain extremely presentable and welcoming for their students. Most recently, Larry was instrumental in helping hang flags in the cafeteria to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you both to Mr. Beckham and Ms. Marcano for always going above and beyond to support Southern Oaks. Our next star recipient is Nicole Malpass. She is a green zone router from the Transportation Department. Here she is coming forward, and she was nominated by Principal Heather Rixsecker. Fairlon Elementary wanted to recognize Nicole Malpass. We know its transportation is extremely busy, but Nicole always takes her time to help them out, and she always does it with positive energy. She assisted the school on many occasions... positive energy. She assisted the school on many occasions, and they can't thank her enough for her support. So congratulations and thank you, Nicole. Congratulations. Next, we have Yolanda Barbary, who's a bus driver from the Transportation Department, and she was nominated by parent Michelle Stefani. Ms. Stefani wanted to recognize this excellent bus driver for her patience and compassion while helping their daughter get on the bus for VPK. It's been an emotional struggle in the mornings, even with her older sister riding with her. When the bus arrives, sometimes there's tears and sometimes she doesn't want to get on, but the bus driver, Ms. Yolanda, is always so understanding and patient, and she never makes the parents feel rushed, even with a growing line of cars. She offers words of encouragement and allows them enough time to make sure their daughter feels safe. We feel so much more secure sending our baby on the bus with Ms. Yolanda, and she deserves many thanks and praise for being such a wonderful person and bus driver. Congratulations and thank you. Okay, and that concludes our special recognitions.
Once again, we thank our star recipients for being such servants to the St. Lucie County School Board District and being treasure hunters. We thank you so much for understanding that all children are capable of success, and Ms. Johnson is a real example of so many educators here in St. Lucie County, and we really appreciate all of your labors. Dr. Prince, do we have anything else?
Yes.
So at this time, we're going to move on to our ESO report. Is David Freeman in or someone to represent ESO? Seeing that there are none, no one here, we're going to go on to our, I believe, the next report is our CWA. Anybody here to represent CWA? Okay, we're moving right along, and I believe we do have someone here this evening to represent our St. Lucie County Youth Advisory Council Chairman, Taylor Daniel. Would you please come forward?
Madam Chair, if I might, please. It is a pleasure to welcome Tyler Daniel to the podium tonight. She will be the, or she is the incoming chairperson of the Youth Advisory Council for this year, and she's got things to tell you about, but we're just delighted that Tyler will be our chairperson, and Lincoln Park Academy will be our host school for the school Youth Advisory Council this year. Welcome, Tyler.
Thank you, Mrs. Hawley. Good evening, Chairwoman Mills, School Board members, and Superintendent Prince. My name is Tyler Daniel, and I have the pleasure of serving as the chairperson for the 2022-2023 St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council, with Anna Rose Hillhorst serving as council secretary. We are proud to continue the mission of the Youth Advisory Council created by former chairperson Christian Baca and former Secretary Erica Mormon, to serve as a platform for approximately 45,000 students throughout St. Lucie County. The council is excited to begin the year. Our 2022-2023 inaugural meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 25th, at 3:30 p.m. in the boardroom of the district office. During this time, we look forward to welcoming representatives from all the St. Lucie County high schools to begin working with the Youth Advisory Council this year. Once the council convenes on the aforementioned date, we intend to continue to be active participants in the assessment of needs, development of policies and priorities, and identification of uses and resources within our school district. One highlight from last year that I'd like to share with you all that corresponds with the purpose of the council was the installation of refillable water bottle stations within the schools in the school district. By working in conjunction with district administration and Dr. Wild, the ideas the council were able to come to fruition. With regard to this year, the council hopes to solidify the establishment of a social media presence to interact and provide information to the student body more effectively. Further, working alongside Mrs. Hargadine and Dr. Prince, our council looks forward to being a student voice for the district's five-year strategic plan. Although there are plenty more visions for the council this year, I'm afraid that sharing them all in this moment will make us all late for dinner, so I'll refrain from doing so. However, I want to extend my gratitude once more to Mrs. Hawley, Mrs. DeMayo, and the Youth Advisory Council for this opportunity. Additionally, thank you Chairwoman Mills, School Board members, Superintendent Prince, and district administration for the support and recognizing the Youth Advisory Council as a platform for sincere and authentic student voices to be heard and shared. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to another wonderful year.
Thank you so much, Ms. Daniels. That was a great presentation first time. Very good.
Thank you.
Dr. Mills?
Yes.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Tyler is way too humble to say this, but it was her idea about the water refill stations that overtook the county. So, congratulations. And I also want to give a special shout-out to my sidekick in this work, Mrs. DeMayo from Treasure Coast High School. Welcome back to a new year.
Okay, before we go on to our consent agenda, I wanted to just mention that Ms. Richardson gave us a call today, and she's under the weather, so she's not present, but we will make sure, Ms. Richardson, I'm sure she's gonna be listening. We'll make sure that you get your book, The Horse, and we hope that you feel better soon. All right, we're going to move on to our consent agenda, the adoption of the consent agenda. I need a motion and a second to adopt. Still moved by Mr. Ingersoll and second by Ms. Hawley to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Superintendent, may we have your recommendations?
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda submitted with the exception of item 17.1, which has been deleted.
Superintendent has recommended the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Move approval.
Second.
All of, okay, are there any items that we'd like to pull? Anybody want to pull an item for discussion? Seeing none, we will go on to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion now carries four zero. Okay, we're going to now go to our informational reports for our charter schools, Independent Classical Academy, Renaissance Tradition, Renaissance Charter of St. Lucie, and Somerset Bethany. These are our financial reports, Board. As always, we do not vote on these. This is for your information only. There is no approval necessary for the financial statement as required. Superintendent, may we now have your staff reports on selected items?
Okay, just a couple of reminders and a couple of thanks and some information I wanted to share with the public. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Leslie, the principal of Village Green. What a great performance by your little ones. I believe they were in first and second grade or second grade. I've got the 60 seconds is a minute song in my head. It'll Never Come Out Now. That's all I keep, I keep going in a circular motion with that, but anyway, I can recall like it was yesterday being the principal of an elementary school, and I thought to myself, no matter what happened, I never had a bad day, because I could walk into any classroom, and it just brightened my day and created so much joy for me. So with that being said, thank you for sharing that with us. I also wanted to add for informational purposes, also, we have rescheduled our regular board meeting. It was initially scheduled on November 8th, which is Election Day, and we have rescheduled that to Tuesday, November 22nd, and that will be 9:00 a.m. Once again, congratulations to three of our board members that were re-elected, but it is their first official day. They're swearing in the board reorganization, and our board meeting will follow thereafter. I also wanted to share, too, on November 8th, we're pushing information out with regards to our referendum renewal, and that referendum renewal, the dollars are used to recruit and retain teachers, school safety, providing a resource officer on all of our campuses, mental health services for our children, and also for fine arts. And the reason I say that's on the ballot is it's important. There's information on our website with how the dollars are spent. It's very transparent, but on Election Day, it's so important, whatever you support is to vote, because your vote is your constitutional right, and it is your choice, and that is the genius of our democracy. Not only is it public education, but it's our ability to make our choices as a democracy. So please do that on November 8th. Just wanted to, also, a couple of other reminders are voting sites. In-person voting, we do work side-by-side with the election office, Treasure Coast High School, Oakhamic, and also Alapata Flats K8s are voting centers. Once again, we want to try to provide access. We do have another measures in place to make sure the public is separate from our student populations, but please use our sites and make sure you get out and vote. The Treasure Coast Business Summit is next Thursday at the Mid-Florida Center. That's an opportunity for our students to have experiences with career and technical education, workforce development. I'm getting an opportunity to speak at that at 10:45. I'm looking forward to it. Hispanic Heritage Month, we're closing that out on October 15th. I also wanted to add that if you go to our website or even push out any information on Facebook, October is National Principals Month. I can tell you, as having almost every job in a public school system, the principalship is the most challenging job, kind of doing that day in and day out, and I want to tell you, I appreciate Dr. Leslie's here today. Thank you, and the principals that might be watching, I just wanted you to know that I appreciate all that you do, because I know how difficult your job is. I also wanted to say that I attended, Children's Services Council donated vending machines for books where kids can go to a vending machine. It was really great. Debbie Hawley joined me at that, at White City. I was unable to make windmill point, but I wanted to thank our partnership there. The Free Heart Screening for Students is Saturday, November 5th. You can go online and register. You must pre-register to do that. Fall flu vaccinations for students. I encourage our students to be vaccinated, and also, they can register for that or get the information for that on our website. The Marching Band Showcase, and I'm going, there's a whole lot going on right now. Marching Band Showcase is a week from Saturday at Port St. Lucie High School from 6:00 to 9:00. I'm a big supporter of all of our fine arts, and it's a great opportunity to see our students participate in that. The College Fair that was supposed to happen during Hurricane Ian has been rescheduled for Thursday, November 3rd from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Fenn Center. We'll be pushing information out that, about that. And then, board members, after our workshop, I would ask you, the Sunshine Kitchen Culinary Cookoff is going to be at the Sunshine Kitchen, and hopefully we get done with our board workshop, so if we can make it, at least to taste food and judge, or watch the judging, watch the judging, you know. And lastly, before we go, I want to congratulate Tyler Daniel for LPA, for being selected. That's a great honor, and I just want you to know, I'm very, very proud of you. I'm looking forward to hearing you every month, because it's a great experience and it's a great opportunity for us, and I will be at your first meeting coming up. Mr. DeMayo, I did get that email, and I'm looking forward to meeting with the students. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Prince. Attorney Molly Shidoc is absent this evening. As we can see, someone is in her place here. This is attorney. Yes, I was going to say that. And welcome to St. Lucie County School Board Meeting. Do you have any comments or anything that you want to share?
I have no comments, but thank you for welcoming.
You are so welcome, and thank you for standing in Molly's place this evening.
My pleasure.
Board member reports. We'll start out with Mr. Kelly.
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I gotta say, this meeting tonight was probably the most enjoyable one since I've been on the board. The kids were fantastic. I don't know who had a better time, the kids, their teacher, or me watching them, because watching those kids, that's what it's all about. That was my overall here. They were fantastic. And then Alvin Miller and Mrs. Johnson. I mean, what a story you can relate to. I had a sixth grade teacher, Miss Sister Mary Elfrida, and I'm still afraid of her to this day. She put me on the narrow. So, a teacher can change your life, boy, they really can. And I know many people out there relate to that. They really can. But I don't know Mrs. Johnson, but I told her, all I know is what I saw for, I'm afraid of her. So I can understand how Alvin, and I mean it in a good way. You know exactly what I mean. And with that, it was a great enjoyment. And we have a new attorney here, and you are an attorney, you are a lawyer, right?
I am, sir.
So, Madam Chair, I don't know if I've shared this. I wanted to make sure. I don't know. I just know it wasn't Molly. But, Madam Chair, what would you call a lawyer that becomes a priest?
Remember, this is live TV.
Why would he ask me?
It would be father-in-law.
Father-in-law.
There you go.
Honey, you guys laughed. Come on, man.
How many of us were holding our breath?
I expected old Larry to laugh, at least, but, oh, I got.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. You are joy, Ms. Hawley.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me follow that.
I gave you material.
Yes. I want to report to the board members that the district advisory council has begun meeting again. In fact, we had our second meeting last night, off to a good start, and that council as well looks forward to participating in the five-year plan as that is undertaken. And of course, we're very joyous that the Youth Advisory Council will be starting back up this month, and we look forward to multiple good things coming from that council as it continues to evolve. Multiple opportunities to be out in the community, visiting with our parents and students, which is always a good place to be, and I want to extend my thanks during this principal recognition month to all of our principals, because it really, really is the toughest job in a school district. We appreciate all you do each and every day for your staff and your students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawley, and Mr. Ingersoll.
No report.
Okay, and I just wanted to make mention, I get calls from time to time from other board members around the state of Florida, and I don't know if St. Lucie County recognizes or understands this, but we are a model board for boards in the state of Florida. And so I just wanted to say thank you for each of your service, and just know that we're working together for the sake of children. That's what it's all about, and that's what we will continue to do. It's about children. So that's my report. I don't have anything more to say, except to say, Ms. Jennifer, I'm sure you can see that you missed a wonderful board meeting tonight. It was really inspiring and one of the best ones, I think, that we've had. At this time, we are going to go to our scheduled speakers. I don't see any unscheduled speakers here before me, but we're going to start out with Ms. Dale Galliano. Would you please come up and know that you have your five minutes, and our attorney will let you know when you're coming to a close. Thank you.
Dale Galliano, Port St. Lucie. I'm going to give a definition from Webster's American Dictionary of English Language of the 1828 on education. Noun. The bringing up as of a child, instruction, formation of manners. Education comprehends all the series of instruction and discipline which is intended to enlighten and understand, all of all, understand- and understand, of all, understanding, correction of temper, form of manners, habits of youth, and fit them for usefulness in their future stations. To give children a good education in manners, arts, sciences, and it's important to give them a religious education which is indispensable, and an immense responsibility is rested on parents and guardians who neglect these duties. In comparison to the Webster's Dictionary of Today, noun is the process of receiving and giving systemic instruction at a school or university level. Done. I like the first one, if that's just me. That was at the time where research, reason, relatability, and record was taken. George Washington, in the Library of Congress, at the age of 13, at the age of 13, he was writing geometreed papers that were graduate student level. We've kind of lost a lot of that as time has progressed. Now we seem to have a consumer type of education where kids come in, they learn to get through the test, they keep moving on, and they don't really hold on to anything as they go on to life. We don't seem to get them to be interested in lifelong learning and education. There is a small portion that are doing that, but as a rule and generally, we don't do that. I've been able to get, not a lot, but when I say not a lot, it's more than I wish to admit to, of parents calling up and saying that the new year has come, different things that are happening within the schools. Teacher Advisory Council is doing meetings at 1:50 in the afternoon. People that have children that are working haven't got a hope in anything in order to make those meetings. Things have got to sort of maybe try and help out so that the parents can be there to be able to participate. They're just trying to put food on the table, and it's kind of tough for them to do it if you're calling meetings, or the schools are calling meetings, pardon me, at 1:50 in the afternoon. We also are still dealing with the appeal of the books. I know we're coming up possibly to a close, and I kind of help but wonder why it is that we're even dealing with this. It's fictional books. Every one of them is a fictional book. It's not like you're trying to decide to get rid of a history book or something that's within the norms of actual education. These are all fiction, opinions. Now, if a parent wants their kid to have it, so be it. How wonderful is that? But I don't think that the school system should be putting this forward to the kids. Let the parents be the rule. They have a personal responsibility, and if we can't even get them to a meeting at 1:50 in the afternoon, how is it remotely possible that they can take charge of anything else that's going on? Classroom libraries are happening, I've been telling everybody, make sure that you tell your, ask your teachers what's in their personal libraries. The board is handling and trying to handle all kinds of different issues, and parents are left in the woods. I'm being asked, what are you doing about gender situations? Are people going to be having a problem with, they start using the wrong pronoun? What is, all these different things that parents are now asking, but they can't seem to be able to get the answer from principals or teachers or any of that when it comes to it. There's a principal that just recently said that can't address any kind of dress code that is already implemented in the rules, can't do that, because, guess what? It may be a problem. They don't, he doesn't get involved. I don't know, it's sort of all kind of getting a little bit crazy now between, it's been over a year now, well over a year now that we've been trying to deal with these fiction books. It's kind of crazy and all of it. I just hope that you take it seriously, basically because of the fact Tallahassee's got till, you till 2023 before we have to deal with it, which I find, you know, but that's government. These are our kids, this is our vulnerable, and we need to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dan. Ms. Susan Siedel, please.
And Eddie Tomwell, either.
Who's not here? Eddie?
Eddie Tomwell.
Okay. So, Lee Staveson.
Before my time, can I, I would just like to say to the board, thank you, St. Lucie County, for sending us the greatest from the county to our people. And I would like to present something to Ms. Mary Hawley and Ms. Heather Rowland, who's not here tonight, I see, but I can give it to someone. Is she here? Okay, Heather Rowland?
Thank you. And I would like to present that to them. They did such a phenomenal job, and we are so glad that they came. We got so much great feedback from them, and so we just want to say thank you. And that is from Parents for Progressive Education. Also, I want to ask one of my partners to come up with me at this time. My name is Olise Ingram-Davison. I am the chief executive officer of Parents for Progressive Education. We would like to introduce ourselves to the public at this time. We want you to know to the public that we are Parents for Progressive Education. Our community liaison, Parents for Progressive Education, is a community-based organization with more than 30 years' experience in education. Our dedicated staff and volunteers consist of parents, educators, therapists, and community leaders that collectively provide much-needed resources and services that catapult family's success and maneuvering within the public school system of St. Lucie County. By strategically partnering with the St. Lucie County Board of Education helps to rebuild and strengthen communication and builds trust between families and a complicated school system, which leads increased academic success for all. By increasing students' exposure to opportunities outside of their current circumstances and promoting parental involvement in the school system, Parents for Progressive Education will fulfill its mission to positively impact the community. Our dynamic programming, our programs offer evidence-based practices that are proven to be effective in overcoming barriers that families face when navigating through the educational system. Our strategy is reduce families' frustration and improve communication between families and schools. In addition, we offer need-based events to the community that includes meals, clothing, and information regarding activities conducted by the Board of Education. Nelson Mandela spoke, "Education is the most powerful weapon you can use to change the world." Who do we serve? We strategically target underserved parents and students of St. Lucie County that reside in deprived communities of underprivileged, such as single parents, foster care, low income, and poverty. We are bridging the gap. We are an extension for continued education outside the St. Lucie County school system that is designed to equip students and parents with the tools to be successful. By providing access to resources helps bridge the gaps in education, mental health, abuse, poverty, homelessness, parenting skills, and spiritual awareness. I want to say to Madam Chair, Dr. Mills, Superintendent Prince, Dr. Prince, Ms. Richardson, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Hawley, Mr. Ingersoll, want to say to each and every one of you, thank for such a successful year so far. Parents for Progressive Education would like to officially introduce ourselves and our partnership to each and every one of you. Want to say thank you so, so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Staveson.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening. So I'm working alongside with Ms. Olise, and I am the founder of Chances Advocates, and chances means changing how autistic needs children establish success. So our mission is to provide a smooth pathway to children and families through the early stages of an autism diagnosis, focusing on providing emotional support, advocacy, counseling, case management, resources, education, and encouragement to all families. So our goal is to pretty much meet the families where they are, let them know they're not on this journey alone. We are assisting them throughout the entire process. We can assist them with attending IEP meetings, collaborating with medical providers, and just be in that voice for them. We understand, you know, children on the spectrum or children period with special needs, the parents have a lot on their plate. So our goal is to be their advocate, be that voice when they're not able to do it, and to empower them to be able to do that for their children. So just wanted to share a little bit. Thank you so much.
Also, I would like to say, as we're ending, I would like to give out some information if there are some parents that would like to get in contact with us. You can reach us by following us on Facebook, St. Lucie County Parents for Progressive Education, also on the website, www.stluciepfpe.org. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Staveson. Thank you, ladies. At this time, we have no unscheduled speakers, so we are calling our meeting adjourned.